Okay. Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting of the New London Select Board to order. It's September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. So if you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name. And first, I would like to thank Phil Sherman, Rip Cross, and Colin Beasley for their efforts on behalf of the town, bringing Whipple Hall into the twenty-first century. It really looks nice. This is our first meeting in the renovated Whipple Hall. Okay, I'm going to call on Chief Cobb and Pam Druniac. You have an award you want to give?
We do, thank you. On the evening of Thursday, August seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, late in the evening, about ten-thirty, a call came in. Can you hear me now? Sorry?
That's better, yeah.
There we go. A call came in, a nine-one-one call came in for a woman, an adult woman, who had been pulled from a pool and had been drowning. And so, the nine-one-one call came in to the New London Police Department, to the dispatch center, and the dispatcher took all of the information, dispatched the call in a very timely manner. Several police officers responded, along with several firefighters from New London Fire Department, and then ambulance workers with New London Hospital Ambulance Service. The skills and experience that our members and with the hospital, with the ambulance service experience that they displayed, from the timely dispatching of the call, to using the AEDs that the police officers carry in their cars, to the equipment that the fire department carries in their cars, and then assisting with the greater life-saving efforts, really were on full display that evening. And the skill and experience of all of those involved really should be recognized, and that's why we're here tonight, with CPR save pins, which Pam Druniac from New London Hospital was kind enough to email Chief Lyon and I to acknowledge these members and make sure that they were recognized for their efforts, providing resuscitation to the woman who Pam informs me is doing very well. And so, they certainly saved her life that evening. And in addition to their efforts and their skills that evening, with the woman who had experienced the drowning, they were instrumental in helping the family member of that woman who was on scene in providing comfort and guidance to him, even driving him up to the hospital to make sure that he got there safely, so that he could be there for his loved one. And the time that it took for this all to occur, they were on scene from the time of the call until about an hour when the woman was transported, and they were all very active during that time, providing CPR and other life-saving efforts. So that's why we're here to recognize them tonight. Pam, do you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. I'm Pam Druniac, the EMS Coordinator and the American Heart Coordinator at New London Hospital. And the fact that the police officers and the firefighters had CPR training and AEDs made all the difference in the world. You said they were on scene for an hour. That's rare. It's very rare that we're on scene for an hour. But it took that much effort, starting with the AED and the CPR, and all the tools that our paramedics carry, to actually make it a viable result. We're very proud of all of them, and it wouldn't have happened if it hadn't started right here with our firefighters, and our police officers, and the dispatcher, the forgotten side sometimes. And we want to recognize the dispatchers as well, because they're listening to all this and not knowing what's going on, and that can be just as traumatic as what's experienced out in the field. The American Heart recognizes the chain of survival, which starts right in the field. We've been very fortunate this year. There have been at least three saves that I remember off the top of my head, that started with police and fire, in three of the towns around here, in Sunapee, and here, and in Sutton. So that training that you allow them to have, and encourage them to have, has made a difference in three families' lives that I know of this year. So we're very proud of that. We'll start with where it always starts, with our dispatcher, Kylie Messer?
Riley.
Riley, I'm sorry, Riley Messer.
I'll get to put this pin on you.
Thank you, Riley. It really is amazing that you kept your head in all of this. It really is.
Good job. Thank you, Riley.
Okay. Officer Brett McKinney? Officer Jeff Daly is not here, but you'll make sure that he gets his pin?
Yes.
Thank you. Our chief, Jay Lyon? How many of these have you got now, buddy?
A couple.
Just a couple or two?
Two.
I've got the new ones, and they're not as easy to get on everybody as the other ones were. We'll make it work. Just here, put it on yourself. Jay, you want to give them to your firefighters?
Sure.
Lieutenant Quinn Miller? Are you taking it, Auntie Chris? No, I thought you were. Got it, I think, unless there's something missing?
No, that's it.
Got it. We thank you all, and certainly, the group that's being recognized, we thank you.
Yeah.
I tried, I tried.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to gather them. We're going to have to gather them.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Emily, for putting this all together.
Should be able to pick them up a little better.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our wage and compensation survey. And before Carol begins, our town administrator, Kim Holquist, has a few words. If I speak?
Yes, thank you. So we've just completed our wage and compensation study. The previous one to this one was two thousand sixteen. And over the past few years, we have noticed that we were unable to start new employees in the first or second step, where you would expect that we would start employees. We were starting them in the third and fourth range. And we began to lose some employees, both for new opportunities and also because of salaries, we felt. So the selectmen felt it was important to do this study, to make sure that, you know, we're being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, both in making sure that we pay staff at an adequate level, not overpaying, but also not paying them at a low rate, so that we lose them and our investment in their training is lost. So the selectmen supported this, the budget committee supported this study, and we're happy to have the results from Carol. She'll explain, she's with MRI, very reputable firm here in New Hampshire. She worked well with myself and the department heads. We were able to give her the information we needed. She asked us for information. So overall, we're very happy with the study, and again, appreciate the selectmen's support in getting this done and getting this important information out.
Carol? Before, I wanted to make one note. We had an employee committee when we did this in two thousand sixteen, and there were five members of the town who participated. We only have one member who was on that committee, still working for the town of New London, and that's David Keith. So David, I'm glad you're still with us. Go ahead, Carol.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure being here, and I will say that you have an excellent workforce here. I was impressed with all your employees and the whole operation. And as you know, it's very positive that you decided, as the Board of Selectmen, to do a study or an update at this point, to make sure you were compensating adequately, because the employees are the most important asset to any organization. Without them, the town can't operate. So my hat's off to you for doing it. So with that, we started, I'm Carol Granfield with Municipal Resources. And Municipal Resources, MRI is how it's usually referred to. I don't know if we've done previous studies here in the town, but we've done them all over New England. We do studies such as this. I specialize in management, organizational, human resource, wage and class studies. But we also are kind of a go-to for municipalities when they have an issue. We do organizational studies, public safety, a lot of recruitment, executive recruitment. And when, in particular, if a department head leaves, all of a sudden, the town says, "What do I do? I need someone till we can hire." So we also provide a lot of interim services, which is helpful to get cities and towns through it. We're located, we actually have two offices now, one in Plymouth and one in Portsmouth. So the study itself started in June, and the goals, project goals, some of the major goals, were to attract and retain qualified personnel, as the town administrator mentioned. During these times, we've noticed, and we've been inundated with communities, just like yours, saying, "We need to do something. We can't hire. We're doing everything we can, but we still can't get them, and we have all these vacancies." I think a lot happened after the pandemic, and in that time period, what we see is a range of people deciding they want to do something else, they want to change their lifestyle, and many retirements. And because of that, now people are taking a different look at the workforce. They're saying, "I want to balance more," you know, after they were home for all that period of time. So it has created a problem for many communities. It also wants to ensure that everyone that's performing similar work is compensated accordingly, so they're classified in the right section. You did have a study in two thousand sixteen. And with that, I will say, I commend you for keeping the pay scale as good as you have, because many communities we see, in your case, and I'll get into it later, the changes weren't as dramatic as some, because you've provided cost of living increases, so you kept that up. Even though you had to maybe hire people a little higher, you've done that. The communities that didn't are seeing huge increases, because they didn't do that in many cases. I want to make sure that the duties are appropriate with the compensation, and provide that there's equitable difference between positions. The update was from two thousand sixteen, so as I say, you've done a really good job in keeping it up. The methodology we've utilized, part of it is, how competitive do you want to be? And we're seeing communities going much higher than in the past. In the past, as long as they were more or less average with the surrounding communities, or ones that were competitive, they felt that was good enough. And now, everyone is seeing they need to go higher than that, in order to both attract and retrain. And in developing the plan, we look at the external market, which is what the salary and benefits are, and then we also look for internal equity, and have a series of factors we look at to classify. And then, we look at job descriptions. We had questionnaires of employees to complete and conduct the analysis. And from all of that is what we developed the plan on. And I went over this with the departments, because many times, people anticipate a study like this is something else. And they come in and they expect all sorts of other things to happen, and that's not what it's for. So we always say, the study is, look to see that you're competitive with the market, and it's fairly structured. We evaluate the total compensation, not only the salary but benefits, because it's a combination of that, that provides the employees, and that the system's easy to understand. Now, what the study is not, it wasn't a staffing needs study, and many times, we'll hear, "Well, the salary's not too bad, but we need more people." And we weren't looking for that as such. And it's not an organizational study, and definitely, many times, employees get apprehensive. They think it's a mechanism to reduce salaries, and that is not the intent of the study, to reduce pay or eliminate positions. And it's not evaluating performance. We're, try to be clear that even though there could be an outstanding employee, the study isn't to pay them for their performance. That's performance evaluation. So we're looking at the position, not the individual, and there are other mechanisms to do that. The pay challenges for local governments today, and this is across the board, we see it everywhere, both small and large communities. There's a huge competition for experienced employees, hard-to-fill vacancies, there are many, and it's a competitive market. And I believe, in one community, there was a public works director, well, there might have been three positions open, and everyone was vying for that. And it takes a certain skill level, so it's difficult to recruit. Internal equity and pay compression. And pay compression occurs when, and we try to work with the community, so this doesn't occur, if they have it, they can address it. That's when you may have an employee who's here for, say, fifteen years, and you hire someone new in, that's making either the same, similar, or sometimes even more, based on recruitment, and you feel you need to do that. Well, that creates pay compression, and that impacts morale. So there are mechanisms we talk about to address that, if and when that does occur. The job knowledge and skill set has changed. Many times, it could be someone who's been a longtime employee, but technology has changed dramatically. Some can make the transition with new technology, others, it takes a while to do that. There's license requirements and many legislative mandates now, that many departments have to deal with. So you have to look at all that when you're recruiting, and keeping people to maintain all those elements. The process we utilized, we first had an organizational meeting with the town administrator, and reviewed several materials that were provided for us. We then held an orientation session with the department head, so they would understand what the study's about, what we're looking for, what we can utilize, and they can advise also their employees involved. We did analysis with a position analysis questionnaire, which asked some additional questions, just to update job descriptions and information about the actual positions, and to further clarify if there's any other information needed, and we followed up with some departments with discussions. We gathered and analyzed salary and benefits from comparable communities, and then evaluating, blending both internal and external, to come up with a proposed classification plan. We developed recommendations for a total compensation, so we looked at both benefits and salary data. We reviewed the draft findings with the town, and to make sure we didn't miss anything at the time. And again, some things changed even from when we started this, so I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But we started out with a set information. We worked with the town to develop a cost-out estimate plan, and developed a preliminary classification and compensation plan with recommendations. We reviewed the job descriptions and questionnaires, and made recommendations for some additional statements to be added to the job descriptions. They were very detailed, but they needed a few other information on it, and then developed the final report with recommendations. The criteria we used for the comparable communities, we looked at not only location, municipal population, the services, form of government, and we received input from the town yourselves, as well as the town administrator, and made recommendations on which communities to look at. And again, those are benchmarks. There's no exact comparison, because in some communities, in smaller communities, one position may wear several hats, whereas a larger community, they may just have one person to do that duty. But we've done enough analysis and studies all throughout New England to be able to modify and work with that accordingly. These are the communities that we surveyed. We actually sent out a survey for information to thirteen communities, and from those thirteen communities, we received data from nine that we could utilize. The ones we did utilize were Bow, Guilford, Grantham, Meredith, Moultonboro, Newbury, Plymouth, Sunapee, and Wolfboro. So those are the ones that we collected the data from. Then the benchmark review we do, we had a salary range for each of the positions that were surveyed, and we gathered information on the market to look at averages, different percentages. We also looked at the number of hours worked. For example, one community may have one position that works thirty-seven and a half hours versus a forty-hour work week, so we gather that as well, so we can compare apples with apples when we look at that. And then looked at trends in compensation. Now, on the benefits analysis, we did, we compared your typical vacation, sick leave, personal leave, looked at whether communities had longevity, paid stipends, and other pay-related benefits. Health insurance, of course, that's always a key one in any community, as well as the retirement and deferred compensation. So with that, we developed what we look at as a total compensation recommendation for both salary and benefits, to give you the combined package. The internal equity and external market, the external market is the salaries that we look at. The internal, we look at a variety of factors when putting them in classifications, not only knowledge, skills, experience, complexity of positions, whether they're supervisory, and things of that nature. The study results were very good. As I say, I think you did a good job with keeping up the pay scale. The classification and pay plans we developed with the pay to be at the top twenty-five percent. You read in there the seventy-fifth percentile, but what it means is you want to be at the higher end in the scale. We kept it, we talked about whether we should develop one that's totally different, as far as grade levels, and it was felt, keep the same number of grade levels. People know about that, they're comfortable with it, but then we'll adjust accordingly within that. So one change we did make, we have eighteen grade levels, but now there's a consistent two-and-a-half percent between each step. Previously, it was varied at different stages, and best practices, and what we're seeing now, is it's better to be consistent and have that two-and-a-half percent, plus for budgeting purposes, you know what it's going to be with increases. What we did was grades one through thirteen now has a forty-one percent range from minimum to maximum, and then grades fourteen through eighteen have a fifty-two percent range. And why that's different with the range and steps, the grades one through thirteen, the number of steps for those positions met that seventy-fifth percentile. However, on the further ones from grades fourteen up, we had to go some additional steps to get that level, so that's why they have more steps. And as within any pay scale, you can always modify that down the road as situations change, but it's a good one to work with. We did recommend two positions for reclassifications, a planning and zoning administrator position, and a wastewater supervisor. We did find one employee position that's what we call redlined. In other words, even with the new scale, they're above the maximum. We talk about that in the report, as to reasons why that may be, and what you can do. Typically, what we recommend is people continue there, but when a person retires or leaves, when that new position is hired, to go within the range again. We did update two titles, which didn't change the grade levels, but you had administrative assistant positions all categorized as administrative assistants. However, there were two different grade levels, based on the responsibilities of those positions. So we recommended to change that to administrative assistant one and administrative assistant two, so that way they can be classified that way. We did incorporate some new titles in the classification for future growth, so these are not, they're listed in the classification plan, but they're not utilized, but in the future, the town may decide they want to do that for growth purposes. And that is in communications, your dispatch positions, to have a communications specialist one and two. And the one would be, hire them on, your two level would be, and that would be something the chief would be involved in to take a look at, to recognize a difference between someone with, who's been there, maybe a lead position, and been there longer. And we also proposed having an executive assistant position. And the reason we did that is, what we see here, you have administrative assistants, but you don't have the level of an executive assistant, which could perhaps be a higher-level position for one for your town administrator, town manager, if that title ever changed. But it would be one that would be, could do duties that they currently are not doing now, that would help the town administrator. She spends a lot of time on some work that someone else could be doing, if they had the expertise to do that. As well as in some departments, to assist a department head on certain duties that currently are not being, helping the department head. So those are things just for the future, that the town may want to consider. The projected estimated cost to implement placing employees on the closest step is sixteen thousand two hundred and three dollars. Now, that can change. It's based on the data we had when we started this, and finance is always updating, and people get increases and such, so that may change. And before you would implement things, you could check, and she could give you a very updated cost amount. But what that amounts to is placing everyone on a step, based on what their currently pay rate is now, moving them to the step in the appropriate grade, where they would not get a decrease, they'd get at least the same or higher. And then, we also recommend the town may want to consider, this is another thing that most studies will do, to recognize beyond that. So we just basically have placed them on there. Now, the town may want to consider to avoid future compression issues, or things of that nature, to either add additional steps or change a salary amount, and that could be based on longevity, performance, there are many situations, but I would encourage, if the town decides to go forth with that, to be consistent in what they do. So don't pick and choose just one individual that they want to give an increase to, it has to be warranted. If they develop a system on longevity, and, you know, we've talked about ways they can look at that at different increments, to have that consistent, so it's not random. So if it's at ten years, someone gets a thousand dollars, that's the same for everyone, whatever the case may be. But that's something that could be looked at. So that would be an additional cost, if the town decides to move forth with that, either now or at a later date, based on budgeting. We did find, in the review and talking with the final details and with the chief, there was one position in the fire department, the fire prevention officer, that is also utilized as a captain position. And that, what we find, and many times in fire departments, because there are summer call, you have an excellent fire chief who does a lot of things, so he's to be commended for running a very competent department. But with that, here in- Uh, but with that, uh, here in New London, you have a fire warden system and, and there's different ways of ranks and that. So that's something that may need to be looked at, uh, with that captain position. And then the chief can look at that, uh, in addition to that. Um, we also noted, uh, as far as in the IT, which everything is getting advanced with technology and many people, I know the, uh, New London does contracts for the IT services, but in some cases, several people are trying to assist during the week and uh, you have it meeting, so it's just something to look at down the road if you want to have, ensure the IT is not, uh, is consistent and there's someone that can, qualified that can help quickly and, and not have to wait till someone comes in if they have a problem. Um, and we also, um, on the job descriptions, recommended some additional statements there, which are helpful to have on there from a, a legal standpoint. On the benefits side, um, your benefits offered are somewhat competitive, but really should be enhanced to address the total compensation package of looking both at the salary and benefits, uh, and especially for both your recruitment as well as retention of your employees. Some of the recommendations we made were, and you can see in the appendix where there's a, a survey of the benefits results, how you compare to some of the others. Increasing sick leave, uh, days, uh, is one recommendation, as well as some possible payment for unused sick leave, either uh, currently or upon retirement. Right now, there is, there's no incentive there, uh, on the sick leave aspect, and others have that. Uh, developing a longevity program in five-year increments, um, and there are different ways that can be done and costing, um, but that's, that's a benefit, not only from the communities we surveyed here, but many communities are having to do, because the people, especially for retention purposes, in lieu of looking elsewhere, if they know they're going to have an increase, they're being recognized for their service and uh, the talent they have, their experience um, with the town. Um, a sign-on bonus, you currently have one for police, which is excellent, and uh, even with sign-on bonuses, that doesn't work all the time. Uh, even with people increasing, we've seen that, and I know I've talked with the chief on that. Uh, but some of your other hard to fill, if it comes up, that's something to consider of having some type of sign-on bonus if there's a position that's critical and you just can't get qualified people. Another is a employee referral and retention bonus. And what that is, is, and again, you can determine the amount you want to do. Uh, an employee referral is if one of your employees refers someone for a position and that individual is hired, then they would get a referral bonus at one point in time if the person stays on, whether it's a six-month or year period. And on the retention bonus, uh, that's not for new employees, that's for your current employees, and many places are going to that now to compensate. If it's not a longevity, they're having a retention bonus of giving them something. Uh, and those are separate, so it's a separate bonus, it's not tied into your salary as such. And we also mentioned work-life balance. Uh, what we're seeing uh, all over is again, after the pandemic, because of people having different working situations, um, the work-life balance is getting more and more important, especially we see with the newer folks coming into the workforce. Uh, they, they want their time off, they want their time with the family, they'll work hard when they're here, um, but they value that more so than perhaps 20 years ago with the workaholics that were here around the clock. So times, times have changed, we all have changed, I think. Um, but some of that is looking at four-day work weeks, and those are different hours for different departments or whatever. But they're finding that they're getting more people, uh, when they recruit for that, if it's a little more flexible, or if there's a remote situation, if someone can work remotely one day a week. And I'm not saying all positions can do this, but these are things that are out there that, um, people are looking at. And, and they are, they're, they're finding they're getting more people coming and, and staying because it's meeting their needs. So with the final study documents, uh, you have the final report, and in that, in the appendices, you've got the market data report, which again, that's a benchmark we look at. It's, it's one piece of information, and then we analyze everything. You've got the proposed classification plan, the proposed pay plan, as well as the um, benefits report. So with that, I'd welcome any questions you have. I enjoyed working with everyone here, and I think um, I, I would recommend you implement and um, at whatever point, how you can implement budget-wise. And if you have questions on any of these, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Bill, would you like to start with questions?
Thank you, Carol. That was a excellent report. Your work was great. Certainly, it's been objective, it's comprehensive, uh, responsive to our needs, flexible, and, and so on. And one can have lots of questions, and I'm sure we will work through a lot in the course of the next um, several, several months, but one today that you might just quickly help me. You refer to the IT position as a future thing, but unlike um, uh, the administrative assistant and the communications jobs, you didn't actually suggest a classification for that. Is there something in your experience that would say if we were to have an IT specialist, whether that might be classified?
Uh, it's something we could look at. It depends on what level you would be looking for, and that could range, that's why it's not in there, because it could range from a, a part-time position that doesn't have certain requirements, but can handle all of your needs, um, to a more high level, depending if you weren't going to contract as much and wanted someone here that could handle all that. So uh, as far as a grade level, it would vary significantly depending on that.
Okay, so more to be determined though, on that, I guess, then. Um, otherwise, I think Janet, um, I, I think there's a couple of things I would suggest we do at this point, but uh, I'd like to turn it over to you and Bibi.
Okay. Um, Bibi, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I, I think it's a very, as Bill said, very detailed, comprehensive report. Um, spent a lot of time with it. I'm pleased with the thought that uh, we've got some folks that may be retiring in the next five years, five to 10 years. So this, I think, sets us up very well for when we need to look for uh, new employees. Um, and I, I'm glad Bill asked the question about the IT. I was looking, I was looking through the, the classification plan myself. Um, you, you met with all the department heads after this report uh, came through or not, or you did, Kim? I'm just wondering what the feedback was from the department heads.
Um, some of them are here tonight. Um, I think that we were all very pleased with it. We especially liked the idea of the, some of the benefit suggestions, and we have some of our own that we will bring to the selectmen as well at some point. Um, I think they, I think overall, the department heads felt that it was well-done, and they're encouraged that, again, we're looking towards making sure that our compensation is fair and equitable. That, that's always the concern with employees, that we can't hire people or that we feel that um, our salaries or what we can offer incoming employees are not enough. We also like, um, that Carol has stressed that it's up to the selectmen. There may be changes we need from here, and we'll be bringing those changes to the selectmen in the coming weeks and months. Uh, we'll probably be addressing some of these things in our budget request that'll come up. Um, so Carol, the department heads were able to speak with Carol before the report came out. Then the report came out, they looked at it the same time you did. Um, and so then we had comments, then it got back with Carol. So they had her contact info, and they may have contacted her more than once, but they were able to talk to her whenever they wanted.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, um, thank you. This has been um, a very comprehensive report, as everyone else has said. I'm glad that we are um, paying our employees adequately. And obviously, we can improve in several, several ways, and I'm sure we will try to do that. But it makes me feel um, pleased to know that the town of New London is adequately compensating the staff. So um, that was a good, good news from my part. So I will open this up. Are there any questions from people who are here? I would ask that you come forward and state your name and speak into the mic.
Peter Nichols, uh, two things. One observation, I commend this study. It's a, uh, it's a testament to well-run government, and uh, it shows me that, that you're taking care of the people that serve all of us, so thank you. A question is, in your, in your looking at the different communities that you studied, how does our retention rate match up to them? How are we doing in keeping our people? Uh, if, if you were able to make that observation. Thank you.
I would say, uh, which I didn't go in depth at looking at that, uh, compared to others, but you do have uh, a more stable workforce, I would say, than some others I've seen. So people are staying here a longer time, and you haven't encountered the turnover that some other communities have constantly. So I would say, uh, it's, you know, your, your retention rate is good, but I, I bring up the compression issue because that can change uh, down the road.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Colin?
Hi, Colin Beasley. Uh, hi, Carol, thank you. I got a couple methodology questions and a couple implementation questions. Um, on methodology, so the last study in 2016 had 18 communities that were part of the survey. This one had nine. Uh, and when you take a look at some of the data that, uh, we compare our compute, uh, communities for, population, budget, square miles, uh, income per capita, median, free income, up to 50% of all, of the nine communities in one category or another were a far reach for New London to match against it. So can you provide some commentary? Did you normalize the data? Did you include the towns irrespective of those data point variances? How did you work through that?
We didn't include some that were way off. Uh, for example, uh, in collecting the data, we didn't throw out the low and the high. Sometimes we look at that. Uh, and again, we use that as just one piece of information, so everything wasn't based on just the communities themselves. Uh, but it was one piece of information. Uh, we didn't utilize um, Hanover, which is a neighbor of yours, because in their case, uh, they are going through several changes, and their data wasn't uh, exact to be able to utilize them in, because they're in the process of changing their system. So it wouldn't have been relevant, so we didn't add. Hanover was one we initially were going to utilize, but because of the stage they were at, it wouldn't have helped one way or the other.
But for the communities we did use, all the data was used?
Yes, yes.
Uh, so when you, when you took it down another layer for job description refinement, uh, did you take a look at the job descriptions? So for example, I, I give, I came out a couple, a couple examples, and I've used these in the past. Uh, the number of road miles would certainly affect the DPW's possible job. Uh, and Kim and I have talked, five out of the nine comparable, comparable communities, there were town managers, not, not, uh, not Kim's administrative title. So how do you, how did you normalize the data so that we weren't skewing the data, either low or high?
With the um, the road miles does vary. Some are in a, a close areas, Pfizer Road Miles, and the other, they're all doing the same work, if you will. And the town manager, town administrator situation, uh, we typically do utilize, uh, we didn't use any city managers, for example, in towns, cities that had city managers. But in particular, uh, town administrators and town managers, um, are very similar in their duties. The pay may vary depending on the community. Uh, some communities, I've seen town managers go to town administrators, and I've seen town administrators go to town managers, and they may have the same salary. It all depends on how the board of selectmen utilizes that town manager or town administrator. Uh, some utilize them more, some utilize them less. Um, but as far as comparison, they're doing the same, they're doing the same jobs. So we didn't discount if someone was a town administrator versus a town manager in those communities. And I know all of those communities of what the work they do, and they're all doing very similar work, so we did not discount them.
On, on the implementation side, for budget purposes, um, can appendix C be mapped to appendix A?
Can appendix C?
So in other words, when you take a look at the appendix...
Oh, appendix C is the um, benefits.
Well, I, it's, appendix A is your...
Is the market data.
All the market data. And your appendix, hold on a minute.
Oh, the pay.
Appendix C is your pay plan.
Right.
So can, is there a way that we can, from a budget point of view, does Lynn gonna, is Lynn gonna be able to put a person into each one of these squares on appendix C? And then we can understand what the pay scale will go going forward as a function of that annual change, year?
Yeah, and I think many communities will do that. We separate them out, but some will put, so you'll have uh, grade five, and it'll list five positions, and then it has the pay scale right there. And I don't know if that's what you are thinking of, but many will do that, and it's helpful in the budgeting process.
And when we apply COLA every year, does that go to appendix C and we change all those rates?
Yes. And that, that's, that's what I commended you on in the, the first place, because that's what's been done the past years. And if you don't do that, then your, your pay scale, if, you have to do a, a cost of living and apply it to the whole pay scale each year, and that way you're keeping up with inflation.
And the step raises is how one moves from one salary grade to the next? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
On an annual basis. No, they move steps.
They move, yeah, they move steps within that.
Within the grade, right. And this one is, is different than the previous, because they're all consistent at 2.5% in between.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to chat about, uh, we, we had an off-bar discussion, I think, at one of the other meetings, where on salary administration, uh, you know, whether we do it on the anniversary of the person's date or once. Can I talk about that now? Is that worthwhile talking?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So, and, and Carol, I don't know whether you have a comment on this one. Uh, I was at another meeting, and we were talking about, I don't know, whatever, it doesn't matter what we're talking about, but what came out of it is how Lynn is doing salary administration. And after the 2016 study, uh, because there was a pretty significant need for increasing folks and the affordability, uh, basically Lynn started doing it on each person's anniversary date. So when you think about the budget planning, budget forecasting, budget administration, and what Lynn has to go through literally every single month to change that, I would recommend that we consider, I guess in fiscal year '25, because we're in the middle of '24, that we just do it annually once. Do it at the beginning of the year, we can, we can look at the budget next year and figure out what that looks like. And everyone will have their, you know, their performance reviews done before date X, and everyone gets the pay grade upgrade on date X. That way you just administer it once. So I would just, because, you know, suggest you think about that.
Yeah.
All right?
I would, I would just comment on that, just from what I've seen of places, that, because I've seen them both ways. Some will shift as you did, doing it anniversary dates, and some do it, uh, as, as you suggested. Uh, and part of it comes down to, uh, what were, number one, what works most effective with the budget, and finance can tell you what would work the best. Uh, and also your departments, based on evaluations. Some have found they like to do it on anniversary day, because there's only so many. Those that have them all, everyone has to do, if you have a large department, uh, they have that. So I would just suggest you, you look at that, it might get some of that feedback before you'd switch. But that, that's what I've seen and, and why some have implemented different ways.
Yep. Thank you.
Certainly consider it, Colin. Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Over this six-year period, what's been the average cost, or what has been the cost of living increases that you complimented Kim on for, and the selectmen for adhering to that?
I think that last year's at 5.25 is by far the highest that we've had in my 12 years here. They were, prior to the price increases we've had, they used to be between one and
That was in effect July 1st.
Okay. When was the last time we did a comprehensive study that Carol has done?
2016.
And Carol, maybe you can answer this. Of the nine communities that you studied, or the 13, nine out of the 13, how often did they perform a similar study?
That varies based on the communities, but they all have updated. So we didn't take, we have found in the past, there were some communities, as I said, with Hanover, which is one reason we didn't, because it was changing so back and forth. And if we did find a community, but none of these were at that status, that didn't do anything, we would add an increase to that amount, a projection to make it more relevant. But none of the communities we used were in that status, so we could use all the communities. They had given increases. I know several of them had just recently done studies, and if they hadn't done studies, they've updated their plans. So they were all very current, and it was FY24 data.
Okay. And based on your experience, I assume doing this for a few years now, how often should a town like New London perform one of these studies?
Well, we say about every three years, you have to keep it up. And it depends on what we found. We did a study over in Maine in, two years ago, and because the market had changed dramatically what they wanted, you might not need a full scale, but just a salary market and analysis update. And that's what we would do, just to ensure that they were where they needed to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Steve, did you?
Steve Unsign, Chair of the Board of Fire Ward, so you commented. So I am interested, because not a lot of communities have Boards of Fire Ward. So when you run into that situation where there's a support for the fire chief, do you find that helpful? Because we certainly do in, in I think managing, helping Jay manage the department. Is it usual that communities don't respond? You had three or four that did not. Does that happen quite frequently?
It does for a variety of reasons. In many cases, they're short-staffed, and especially in payroll and finance and those situations, they can't participate, they have too much going on, they can barely keep up with what they have going on. In other cases, it's time of year, vacation schedules. When we do them in the fall, sometimes it's hunting schedules that you can't get paid. So it varies. And you get over the holidays in December and January. So many times it's one of those factors as to why, why they didn't, or they've had, and in this case, there were several that they had a change in personnel. They either were recruiting the person, couldn't find someone, so someone was wearing three hats, and this was not on their top priority, so.
Okay. And when you have a town like Hanover that has a, was going through a change itself, do you, would you substitute ever a town like Lebanon? Those are, if we have, if we're losing firefighters, those are our two main towns that we're losing them to. But do you substitute and, because they're, they're so close to us regionally?
Yeah, we didn't with, and actually, we've done several studies with Lebanon, and they've, they've been in the process with their unions and such. So they've been updating theirs constantly. We did not utilize them primarily because they were a city and all the other positions were a little different. But I will say, and you are a rare entity with fire wardens, because most of the communities that do have a combination with a paid and called department, it's either voluntary, it's totally different or not the same. So in your case, it appears to work well with the fire warden and the assistance that it provides the department. But there aren't that many that I'm aware of that do have that.
I would agree. There aren't that many of us in other communities. Will the PowerPoint be available, Kim, online?
No.
Okay. And because you did make note in there about the, our fire prevention officer and captain level, so the fire wards will address that.
Yeah.
Great. So, and did, when you came back and said that you spoke, or the draft was reviewed by the town, was the draft reviewed by the town department heads or just, just by leadership in the town?
Yeah, just leadership. Lynn and I looked at the numbers, and then it was shipped.
So two of you.
Us, yes.
So the individual department heads, primarily police, fire, and highway, did not see the, or...
They saw it at the same time as the selectmen. They got it at the same time as the selectmen.
Okay. So there's opportunity for dialogue. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Are there any other questions or comments for Carol? If not, thank you. This was, this was great. Very helpful.
Well, let me know if there's anything else that comes up after you discuss more.
We certainly will, yeah. Bill, did you want to?
I'd like to suggest there are two things that we might consider doing tonight.
Okay.
First of all, it seems to me we ought to adopt the pay plan that's been proposed. So I would move that we adopt the proposed FY24 pay plan as presented in Appendix C of the wage study, Wage and Classification Study.
Okay. You made that motion. Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
We need discussion for...
Any discussion on that, to adopt what has been suggested already? Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Then second of all, Carol has noted that there were two positions that were out of, out of place in terms of the classification...
Right.
...system. So in terms of those positions, not necessarily the people in them, I recommend that we adopt the recommendations of the study to change the grade of the Planning and Zone Administration position from 14 to 16, and the wastewater supervisor position from 12 to 14, and to place the current staff in those positions at step one.
Okay, so that's a motion. Are there any comments about this?
Second.
Second, all right. Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Okay, Sheri. Sheri Williams, the Chair of the Tracy Library Board of Trustees, has a request.
Yes. I think, as everybody knows, the library is temporarily closed as we're dealing with investigating an indoor air quality situation that has potential health and safety issues. At an emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees on August 30th, the Board voted to authorize expenditure of up to $30,000 to cover the costs of air quality sampling and testing, deep cleaning of HVAC units, inducting, and an ongoing investigation of the source of a really musty odor near the old Main Street entrance. All work to be funded through the Tracy Memorial Library Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. And so I am here on behalf of the Board to ask the Board of Selectmen to approve withdrawal of $30,000 from that fund to cover the costs I listed.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect? So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions about this motion?
I have one quick question for Lynn, is just the balance, the current balance in that reserve fund and what it will be after we...
So the balance at the end of the fiscal year, sorry.
The balance at the end of fiscal year 2023 was $104,000, but there was a warrant article for, I believe, $85,000? Or was it just the one, the $35,000?
For...
For flooring and kitchen and bathroom. That's what I have it as. I just want to make sure that I'm subtracting the right numbers, because that would leave $56,000 in there, but you said you're not using that money.
So I believe that Joe Cubitt just updated us that the current balance is around $112,000. That does not include this year's deposit of $37,500. And the $85,000, which we included in last year's budget to expend, was related to a prior warrant article...
Okay.
...that we do not intend to spend this year. We're pushing those projects forward.
Okay. So the 112 must be with dividends and interest and all that, so...
I believe so.
My number was 104 plus the 37.5, less the 85 gave you 56,000. So if they're not using the 85, it just bumps that back up to 130 and change.
Okay.
Yep. Did I lose you?
Nope.
Okay, good. There's enough money to do it.
Okay, any other comments, questions? No?
Is 112 now, and then subtract the 30,000?
It's 112, and you're going to add 37.5. And then take out that 30.
Hmm?
Oh, yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, ladies. Jamie Hess is here from the Energy Committee.
Good evening. I am Jamie Hess, Chair of the Energy Committee for New London, and I'm here in the hope that we can move New London Community Power forward this evening with the approval of the cost-sharing agreement sent to us by the statewide nonprofit Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And the related documents, which are referred to as the three Rs, energy portfolio, risk management, and electric rates, and financial reserves. So I hope you've had a chance to review all the documents, and according to Kim, our Town Council has reviewed them as well and said, oh, I've seen these before, because 12 other cities and towns across New Hampshire have approved identical documents. So I'm here to answer any questions and hope that you can act favorably on a motion to approve these documents.
Okay. Bill, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I enjoyed reading every word of it, Jamie. Thank you so much for giving me something to do over the weekend. I don't know what else I would have done.
I hope it didn't take too many all-nighters to get through them.
It was thorough, and I continue to applaud what you and the Energy Committee have done to bring us to this point.
Well, thanks, and I can't wait to see this become a reality so that hundreds, if not thousands, of New Londoners can start saving money on their electric bills starting in February.
Right, yeah. BB, do you have any comments, questions?
Nope, same. And I brought my minutes from the August 9th meeting. I could remember everything that you went over, and I, again, thank you so much for all the work that you've done on this. It's really exciting.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask Jamie a question? No?
I think there's some people from your committee here, though. You want to introduce them to us?
Well, it looks like we have Tim Parody, the Vice Chair of the Energy Committee, who wears many hats here in the town of New London and works diligently on all fronts.
Okay.
And I see some regular guests at our monthly meetings here as well.
All right. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the documents that the Energy Committee has submitted for, what are we calling it? The...
So there's, there's a proposed motion that was circulated, which...
All right.
Kim, you have a copy, right?
Okay, Bill?
Would you like to give it to the...
No, you can.
And I guess the only question I had was whether the motion as written makes me the so-called authorized officer.
Yes.
And I'd be honored to serve in that position, but I don't have my heart set on it. So, Kim, if you'd like to be the authorized officer, or anybody else...
I'll be your backup.
Okay.
If you'd like. Jamie, you do a great job.
So I move that the New London Board of Selectmen authorize, hereby authorize, the Town Administrator to enter into the cost-sharing agreement and member services contract for the complete service bundle with the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, CPCNH, with Jamie Hess as the authorized officer, and with elections in Exhibit C, Article 8, Section 2 of the agreement, being A, yes, B, no, and C, no. And further, be further moved that the London Board of Selectmen hereby approves CPCNH's data security and privacy, energy portfolio, risk management, and rates and financial reserves policies. That's what you meant to say, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jamie. I know how hard you all have worked on this.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
This is wonderful.
Well, thank you all, and I, I hope that within the next week, we'll get a positive answer from the Public Utilities Commission with their approval of our electric aggregation plan.
Okay.
Great.
That's the next step, and then we'll keep moving forward toward that February launch date.
All right. Well, please convey our thanks to the Energy Committee.
All right, well, Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
And I will convey your thanks to everyone else as well.
All right, thanks.
And thank you all. It's, it's wonderful to be working together on such a worthy project.
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a comment about a matter that has not been on our agenda tonight? Bob?
Is this on?
Yeah, I think so. Yep, looks green.
Oh, there, oh, okay. My name is Bob Bowers, and I am a resident of New London. It has been six months since the March Town Meeting, at which voters declined to purchase land for a new police station at a new location by a vote of 78% opposed. At that time, and at various times since 2018, the Selectmen have been urged by many in town to acquire the lot abutting the Bueker Building on Siemens Road, the McEnroe Lot. The rationale has been that even if a new police station were ultimately built on a new parcel of land, the McEnroe property would have great value to the town for its potential use in accommodating any future use of the Bueker Building, using the building on the McEnroe Lot for town purposes, possibly including for workforce housing for town employees, taking it down and putting in extended parking, or consolidating it with the Bueker parcel to accommodate any addition to or expansion of the Bueker Building, or their for continued use as a police station or such other uses as are subsequently determined. It could as well accommodate a new police station as proposed by Harriman Engineers in their report to the Selectmen in December 2018. In the past, two of the Selectmen have been strong proponents of placing on the Town Warrant articles that merit Town Discussion in order to allow the voters to be heard by voting in favor of or opposed to such articles. I ask, on behalf of all of those who support acquiring that parcel, that you place on the Town Warrant for March 2000, 2024, an article proposing the acquisition of the McEnroe parcel. This would allow six months for discussion with the owner regarding a purchase. It would not preclude the Selectmen from continuing to look at other parcels for a new police station, and it would demonstrate, and it would demonstrate that the Selectmen are looking to the future of our town and what is best for the town by controlling that property next to our Town Hall and next to our Town Green. This is an opportunity that should not be lost and should be pursued while it may be available. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? If not, do we have any old business? No? Okay, new business. Town administrators report.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
If not, do we have any old business? No? Okay, new business. Town Administrators Report. On Tuesday, September 12th this week, I went to Concord along with Chair Kitter, the Planning and Zoning Administrator, Adam Ricker, Bob Harrington, and several members of the Public Works Department to attend the dedication, or the memorial, to the Public Works employees who have died in service. I don't know if anybody has seen that. It's down in Concord by the DOT Building. If you go to the motor vehicle building, that road there, they dedicated 15 more names to the monument. And as they, it's not 15 people who died this past year, it's, they're going back into records to try and find all of the folks that have died in the service of Public Works. As we probably, many of us know, we, New London, lost one Public Works person in 2005, Ryan Haynes, and his name is on the memorial. The memorial itself was designed by Kelsey Lee, who was at the time a Colby Sawyer College student, and they awarded her the design, and she got a scholarship for it. Richard Lee, our Public Works Director here in New London for, well, he worked for the town 40-plus years, was instrumental. And it was funny, because at the ceremony, they mentioned his name as being instrumental in getting this monument into Concord. So it was pretty amazing, and Richard ended up being there. So I was able to say hi to Richard. I haven't seen him in a couple of years now. So he looks great, says hi to everybody, misses everybody. So that was pretty exciting this week, and it's really nice. Phil Sherman will be in next week, next meeting, rather, to give the final report on this building, which, as Janet's already mentioned, came out really great. So, job well done. And we'll be getting some running, some carpets in here to hopefully protect the floor, because when winter gets here, there's a lot of salt and sand and things like that. So we'll do our best to keep the floor looking as great as it does now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Bill, community reports?
Thank you. On the 5th of September, I attended the monthly meeting of the Water Commissioners. I was actually joined by six residents, three of whom are here tonight, and continued to have, listened to the discussion about what's going on with issues in front of the Water Commissioners. On their, at their October meeting, the first Monday in October, their engineers for the Main Street replacement project will be there. And on their first meeting in November, the engineers for, that are working with them on future water sites will be there. So the next two meetings should be interesting in terms of getting an update on the engineering work that's been going on, both on the Water Main Replacement Project and on future sources.
Okay, that's it?
That's, that's it, unless the Epstein's or Mr. Nichols want to say something further.
Okay. BD?
August 30th, we had a Budget Committee meeting, set our dates moving forward, starting in November. The meeting was supposed to talk about capital reserve accounts, review them again. It started to get a little bit into the weeds, so it was decided that there was, they were going to form a subcommittee. I think it's John Wilson, Colin Beasley, Charlie Kelsey, and Melissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that are going to meet separately, review the capital reserve accounts, and then report back to the Budget Committee. And then on August 25th, I attended another one of the Save the Lakes on a Bee watershed meetings. And again, it's just continued conversations around the three topics that we've decided to kind of focus on, which is the septic ordinance, the road salt, and then erosion control ordinances. We had a presentation around erosion control and storm water management that was really fascinating. Newberry is moving forward with trying to put in place a septic ordinance. They've got some public hearings scheduled coming up to get input from the public. I've had some conversations with a couple of the different lake associations. There is interest out there. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 9th, 23rd, and 30th?
Oh.
So moved.
Are you going to second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With regard to the working session on September 6th, BB, did you have a...
Yeah, I just had a slight change to paragraph three. Do you have the new language in front of you? I changed to, let's see if I can...
Janet, you have it. That one doesn't look... Hang on. Let me see if I got the other one.
I just have my chicken scratch.
Nope.
Here it is.
Okay.
All right. I'll just read it as I drafted it. "Selectman Casey also suggested that the Board address the history of modern policing as we plan for a new and updated facility. If the final plan involves leaving the Buick Building, then we must prepare a cost estimate for bringing the Buick Building back to a state where it can be used by the town for other purposes after the police department leaves. During a discussion about the Buick Building, Chair Kitter pointed out the town, that the town common cannot be used for expansion in that direction, and residences are in the way for expansion in the other direction."
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our next meeting is September 28th. So I guess we just do pay vouchers and that sort of thing right now. Okay.